Go around and have each of you announce where you are signing into the meeting from in compliance with the state regulations. For remote meetings.
Donna Stalling signing in from Lathrop Village, my home.
Bruce Cantor from Oakland County, Lathrop Village, Michigan.
Councilman Ian Ferguson, Oakland County, not in the basement, Lathrop Village.
Um, Kelly Garrett signing in from Oakland County, Lathrop Village, Michigan.
Jim Nelson, Troy, Michigan, Oakland County.
I think we just needed the elected officials, so I think that's good, but thank you.
I will be.
Thanks, Jim.
And the first item on the agenda is at the request of the Historical Society, and I see Annette Kingsbury here, so.
Hello.
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 How are you, Annette?
Good.
Good.
Is Robin here or no?
Not, I don't see her online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is Mike Griffin. She texted me that she, her laptop is taking a long time to boot up.
Oh.
She's been trying to join, so I don't know if Annette wants to go ahead.
But up to you, Mike.
You can go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, hopefully you, you all received our, the memo I emailed you on, sort of just to bring you up to speed where we are, as you know, we have really been struggling this year, lost our office, and in doing our research on what other communities do, as I said in the memo, um, they all have some kind of support from their municipality, usually especially for a location. And we've been kind of stymied in that regard because offices in Lathrop are just way too expensive, and the zoning ordinance doesn't allow us to operate in a house. So we were wondering if there would be any will there to form a subcommittee to help us study a way forward and see if the city can participate in getting the Historical Society on more solid footing and kind of assuring the future of it. We feel the archive we have is extremely valuable. It's been, we've been told it's an extremely complete archive by a state, um, a librarian who came and evaluated us for our grant, and we just think it's worth saving. Oh, any questions? I'd be happy to, Mike and I will be happy to field them.
So, so do you guys have, I mean, I know you were talking about the zoning ordinance. Is, do you guys have an option, or have you explored an option if, if that zoning, if the zoning didn't prevent you from doing that? I'm just curious.
We haven't actually explored them. We know there are some homes that are long vacant in the city that people are, you know, paying the taxes, mowing the lawn, that sort of thing. Um, but we don't, I don't, I didn't feel comfortable actually contacting a property owner when we don't have the wherewithal to acquire a place or even rent it at any kind of market rate.
Yeah, so there hasn't, hasn't been any contact with somebody, um, you know, obviously if we want more of a permanent location, so if you buy a house, who wouldn't have the financial resources to do anything like that or to rent it? I mean, we would hopefully be on a longer term lease because the places that we have been in, we haven't had leases because um, the landlords that we have are gracious enough to let us um, either stay there for free and no utilities or just charge utilities. Um, we were in a couple of certain hour locations and kind of been bounced around, and we have a huge, uh, collection that's now in the, I think the letter said in the basement of the library over there. It's just so expensive and heavy to keep moving around, so I think we were just looking for more of a permanent location to have the archives and then start displaying them, much like any, most of the other cities that have Historical Societies around here have, so.
Cheryl, is there, is there any opportunity, um, in terms of the study that we're talking tonight about commissioning for the, you know, for the extra space for, um, the police to see if there's any opportunity in that study to see if, you know, there would be any room for the Historical Society?
Um, we could try, but I don't anticipate that the police department is going to have extra space after we meet all of their needs.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I guess the, the other option is to see if there's any way that the city might be able to come up with, with some money to be able to help, help out like other cities do. Which I, I don't know if that's possible. We'd have to look, I mean.
Right, and, and, and a lot of cases, the property was donated, and since it's over, I think, uh, Royal Oak is in the old fire hall, and Berkeley's kind of in the same situation, you know, obviously we don't have a old fire hall, and we have the old town hall, but, um, you know, if someone were to-
Question real quick?
Sure.
Um, so I know like with, um, the Lathrop, uh, Community Foundation, um, the Children's Garden, I think the homeowners, they do some fundraising to also kind of, uh, to help them with some costs. Can you all tell me about any fundraisers, fundraisers that you may have coming up or have done?
Well, we don't have anything, uh, in the immediate future planned. Um, we've only had small fundraisers since I've been here, which is just a few years, but, um, selling the historic home plaques, copies of blueprints, photos, that sort of thing. Um, I guess they did do home tours in the past, um, which was a major source of revenue. I'm told that they did that in conjunction with a garden club, which doesn't exist anymore, and that, um, that takes a lot of volunteer time. I did look last year into just the cost of renting a bus. Uh, Chris Clough gave me some names of companies to call to see about maybe just doing a drive around kind of Historic Home Tour, but the cost of a small, you know, a small enough bus was prohibited. It'd be like twenty dollars or more per person just to rent the bus. So that just didn't seem, um, you know, workable. I understand the city now has a small bus, so maybe that situation will change. I don't know if we'd be able to do that or not.
And, and I think in our situation, um, we would have to do some major fundraising to be able, because, you know, we need a space for all of this stuff, and I think the one we looked at was, uh, eight hundred dollars a month on a lower level in one of the buildings on Southfield Road, and, um.
And so also, it was already, I know that I saw something go back and forth about a, a grant, was it, I think Oakland County or something? You said you already did apply for that one. I think it was for fifty thousand dollars.
No, I don't know, I don't know what you're referring to there. We had a state grant a couple of years ago, but we didn't actually get cash. We received materials and an intern in that one.
Cheryl, didn't she send something for that, or am I mistaken?
Yeah, I sent it, it was a couple of months ago now.
There was, you sent us an email about a COVID-related grant program. You had to show that you had been harmed by COVID, and that just, that didn't apply to us. Is that the one you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, our problems really, you know, really weren't related to COVID.
Well, I, I guess their thinking was if you were impacted in your ability to have events or to host fundraisers, you were impacted, so.
Well, the way I read it was pretty specific about the documentation, so I just, I mean, I certainly, I'm sure that I've sent that to Robin, or you sent it to Robin, but, um. Okay.
Annette, have you guys explored the possibility? I'm just trying to think creative here. Um, you know, I know you said Berkeley has an old firehouse or something. Is there any kind of opportunity to, you know, maybe since, I mean, Berkeley is a close, a community that's geographically close to us, maybe, um, offering to, sorry about that, I can't, I can't silence that, but, um, maybe offering to, uh, share space with them and pick up some of the costs, would that be something you think another community that's close by might be agreeable to?
To my, to my knowledge, we have not approached any other communities. I've thought about whether Southfield might have room because they have uh, several buildings their Historical Society operates. I think our first desire would be to keep it in Lathrop Village.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think outside of the box a little bit here.
In fact, I, I have a sister who's a librarian at Lawrence Tech, and we asked her if there'd be any interest there, and she said they don't even take care of their own archives. They don't care at all about them, so they wouldn't be interested in housing ours.
And a lot of the, the ones that we talked, we talked to, I talked to Royal Oak in Birmingham, and they operate as part of the Recreation Department, you know, kind of as a community type event, and, um, you know, the city, like in, in both cases, they have, you know, places that the city provided them, and, you know, then they pay the, you know, utilities or operating expenses, but it's just the, the cost of finding a place. And, you know, other, other areas have, um, have put villages on the ballot to support their historic, you know, districts or societies. I think Oakland Township just had one, uh, recently. Um, I think Robin might be on now, and, um, she said she can now see. So I don't know if, uh, maybe she, if you can unmute her if you can, but, uh, yeah, I, I guess the reason that we're coming to you is we're, we're at a point where we just want to see, you know, if the city, you know, has a, a will to, um, you know, main, help us maintain this part of the history of Lathrop Village, all the artifacts that we have, and, um, you know, if they don't, then I guess we just go on our way and, and try to find something, but I don't think it's sustainable to keep moving from place to place if the, he has to, you know, people that are, are good enough to to give us free, you know, free space.
Hi, I don't know, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Ah, hello, sorry I'm late.
All right. We can hear you. Um, is, just a quick question, um, and maybe to Cheryl, I don't know, um, how off the ground we are with this garden plot project with, uh, with rec, but is there a way that this group can partner with that group? Is that possible? You know, maybe they can realize some future fundraisers. Uh, I'm just thinking short term right now until, until we can kind of figure out where to navigate them to put all the, all the archive material.
I'm not certain. I would think that their fundraising would be to sustain their efforts, so I guess my question would be what has the Historical Society approached it from a sustainability plan in terms of what are the resources needed to maintain the archives or to have a display area, and then what are the associated costs? Um, it's difficult for council to, um, say what their partnership of participation could be unless there's an overall overarching plan.
Our annual operating costs in terms of the materials we need to process the collection and/or do any kind of displays are pretty minimal. When I became president, which is over ten years ago, we had about ten thousand dollars in our budget. Um, we have about a thousand dollars left after all of the moves, but we're pretty frugal.
Uh, I'm sorry, I might have not heard it. What was your, uh, annual aberrations cost?
Oh, I'm just saying that we, um, we've made ten thousand dollars last more than ten years.
Yeah, I think what Cheryl was, was, was getting at though is, I mean, not only the operation cost, but, you know, what are the costs, including, you know, a potential facility, you know, how much, you know, you know, kind of a, uh, an overarching plan with, with, uh, you know, kind of a monthly budget or a yearly budget, and, and that could then, you know, help us determine, I mean, help us at least give us a, a framework to, to look at in terms of, you know, financial support.
Uh, okay. Our biggest obstacle right now is a space to work in, and I believe that in our, uh, note to you, Annette gave you some of the, um, rental costs in the area, so, I mean, once we have a safe place, our operating expenses are minimal. They're only two or three thousand dollars a year at most.
So what we can do, just so we can, um, look at this objectively as a council, um, we can either A, put a committee together to, to flush this stuff out together, or the Historical Society can put together like a, not a business plan, but something that lets us know exactly what you think the operation, like a budget, I guess, um, that shows what, um, uh, uh, space will cost, so everything like that, and then present it as a proposal to, um, the council.
Well, the only thing is, you know, it would depend so much on whether it was, uh, in a home or in a rented office space. Um, and the residential thing, again, we're stuck. Do you want, would you want us to just go ahead and come up with a budget for residential, even though right now we wouldn't be allowed to go in there?
Scott, could that be handled via, via a variance, or, or is that something that couldn't be variance out?
Well, I guess, so if, if the intent is to take a residential property and utilize it as a, um, an office, for lack of a better term, then that's not something that would be ZBA doable, but if it's, if it's simply storage of materials, if it was, um, if someone was living there, then that would be, you know, there would be nothing including that. I guess, I guess I would have to see what the intended use of the, of the property was to be able to give you a definitive answer, but.
Well, and I'll just chime in, you know, and, and I have spoken before, and I think I've even had the same conversation with Robin. Um, you know, really the idea was that, um, you utilize a, a home as one, storage, two, office, and three is like a way to, you know, as museum and display space, right? And so that is, um, you know, I mean, that generates, that will generate a level of traffic that is not accounted for within, you know, our residential uses. I know, um, some examples that, you know, Annette and I, and Robin and I have spoken about are, you know, the Doctor of Sinene Sweet House, you know, and that has, you know, that has its own historical significance as, you know, as his own home, not just, you know, a house. Um, same with sort of like Frank Lloyd Wright had, you know, there's home tours with there, but then, you know, there's an intrinsic historic value to that particular home and how it, you know, is woven into the fabric of the community, so, um, you know, I mean, there's just, there's an extra layer of, of nuance there to having it in a residential district, right, so.
Well, I guess we could, you know, like, I think the letter said, we priced it out in about a hundred, eight hundred dollars a month. That's, you know, roughly ten thousand dollars a year is what we would need. Um, the one space that we did look at, you know, if, if, if it were to be the city that was paying for it, I don't know that would be doable because it's at a lower level. You have to go downstairs. There's no elevator. It's not eighty-eight. So, I mean, we could look at other, other possibilities. I, you know, we've called around at one time, and um, this is actually the space we're looking at is an insurance company, and, you know, it was a nice renovated big space. Um, and at the time it was available, but I think it was at eight hundred dollars a month, and that is that?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds right.
And I don't know if that included utilities or not. I'm not sure about that.
I don't remember.
Um, just for time's sake, um, I would, uh, just recommend putting together, um, a budget, um, or budget slash proposal to, to the council, and that it would include any type of fundraising ideas that you may have, or, you know, what the Historical Society is also going to, um, uh, contribute to it, just so we'll have a, a better working idea of, of what the ask is. Um, yeah, and I guess that'll be coming from the standpoint, it might be two, honestly, um, and I'm not sure of this, so Scott, keep me right, um, of the cost, if it was in a house or if it was in a, a commercial, uh, building. That make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think what, in, in addition to a budget, what you'd be looking for is what, what their intended use of the space would be for, if it's, again, if it's gonna be, um, like Susie said, more of a museum, showplace type of situation, or is it gonna be simply storage and, and meetings? That, I think, would, would go a long way in, in assisting council and determining how to move forward with it.
And also think about some outreach programs that you guys could try to employ in twenty-one. I mean, we're, we're not living in the same world we used to live in, so you can get as creative as possible.
Okay. Okay.
And I think, you know, part of it is, is it'd be a little easier to do outreach if we had a location where people could actually come in and see the stuff that we have, which has been a problem. I mean, we were in a basement of one of the places just north of, uh, Discount Tire, you know, it's fairly derelict property. It wasn't the nicest place, and there really wasn't a lot of room for people to even move around in there, and I think the outreach is gonna be displaying the type of items that we have. Um, you know, otherwise people just, you know, were just kind of, uh, locked in a basement working on, you know, archiving the information, but I think we can put something together. I think a lot of the information is in the letter, but we can just consolidate it down to say, you know, what we're looking for and what we would need. And, uh, I think what, you know, ultimately, like somebody mentioned that, you know, it'd be nice if we could, if you could form a committee and have us work with somebody to see, you know, what's possible. You know, obviously, we don't know what's possible for the city to do and what zoning regulations are, and, you know, financially what they can do, but, uh.
And I think that, and Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you mean outreach as in what, what the, the Historical Society, like grants and things like that, they can find?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so to kind of, um, not outreach for, to, to get support, I guess, it'd be more or less look into the grants that's available.
Exactly.
Right. The county, um, and things like that, so. Will you take care of trying, Cheryl or Susie, to put together, um, a, a committee or have someone assigned to the committee? Because I'm not sure if we want to do that.
Well, do you want just, that just to be staff, or do you want some of the council members to be involved?
Oh, it'd make sense for Chris, wouldn't it? Or maybe Chris.
I wasn't sure, Chris, so that's why.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Offer, because that, since he's recreation, and this could possibly be the DDA, it could possibly, I'm not really sure who. Maybe we'll have to move this one over for a second, um, and I'm sorry that I'm rushing because we only got thirty minutes that we have.
Right.
Up on our agenda, so, um, I don't want to put anything on the council's plate, that's putting them on a committee either. I'm almost afraid to ask, but, oh, Salim's not here, so make Salim committee, so, um, no, let's, let's talk that out for, um, amongst us, I guess, if you could, um, send something out to see if there's a, a council person that wants to, um, volunteer to be on the committee, and also I just don't know who it would be from the staff perspective.
Um, probably me or Susie.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, but I just wanted you all to sign up yourselves for that, so, um, if you-
I may be interested. Let me think about it.
Okay, how about this? We'll get back together and we'll talk about this via, uh, maybe email over the, the holiday, um, I'm saying vacation because I'm on a vacation, but, uh, over the holiday, uh, whatever you call it, and then get back together on, what is that, Monday? When do we come back together?
The fourth.
Fourth, okay, and then we'll talk about it on the fourth.
Yeah, so it's definitely an impressive collection, and it'd be great if we could find a way to make it more accessible, um, and find a more permanent home. Every time I've been in that office there, it's, it's, you could, you could spend hours in there looking through the stuff, so.
Yep.
And I don't know if you've, if you've been to the, our location, I mean, we had a space in the city hall, right? And that was just a tiny bit of the whole collection that we have.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for coming. I appreciate you, um, for bringing this to our attention, and if you all can also, I guess, maybe be available on the fourth for the study session, um, perhaps, I don't know if I'm pushing it with putting together a budget by that time, or just an idea of what a proposal may look like. I might be pushing it, so don't, you know.
We'll get together and figure out if we're gonna be ready by then and let you know.
Okay.
I would say revisit, revisit the COVID grant, because you guys, it may apply to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, next is the marijuana licensing and application process, um, and just being very conscious of the time, we only have really thirty, thirty minutes for the next four things that we have to talk.
I don't really have anything new for you guys tonight with respect to that. Um, still waiting to get feedback and comments, getting a little bit of stuff, uh, you know, Kelly had sent me a couple, uh, inquiries, and Bruce, I've got his comments and Susie, but, uh, if any of the other members of council have any feedback on, on the the draft ordinances that were presented at the joint meeting, uh, we would be happy to hear that. Uh, Jill and I, we're talking about taking it to, um, making it an agenda item for the Planning Commission to work at at their next meeting. I think, uh, Susie, I think that's probably gonna happen.
Wait, I was planning for it.
But that's pretty much all I have update. I don't have any new updates for that tonight.
Well, I did have a question, um, on this, and that was, um, I guess it is under this on page seventeen, which is gonna be the license application evaluation. This is, I guess it all is proposed, um, but things can be added to this, like what we talked about, Scott, or what I said in the email about, um, points regarding someone that is an existing, uh, business owner in Lathrop. Um, I saw something that just came by, uh, Cheryl, what just came in email? Someone had a question about it too?
About whether there was an Oakland-based business or a Michigan business?
Yeah, because that was my question, too, because I saw that in here where I thought I was being very savvy and put sticky notes everywhere, but obviously one fell out because there was one that was in there that was like, uh, yeah, I learned it from you, Bruce.
Yeah, so that's, that's part, um, and that's part of what, what, what the type of feedback that we're looking for. Um, now, just for those that weren't, Kelly's inquiry was whether or not there was any distance limitations with respect to, uh, places of worship, and there, there aren't currently, but that's, again, that's something that if council feels strongly, they have that ability to, to include in, uh, in their ordinance, in the zoning ordinance, so, uh, that, again, that type of feedback's what we're looking for. Um, we haven't, uh, what I would like to do ideally would be to get this language, um, hammered down, and then, once that's, um, in a, a more concrete form, then, then we can start working on the, the evaluation endpoint system. How, how, how that's going to be scored, who's going to be doing that scoring, and what criteria they're gonna utilize to do that. Just some early thoughts on that that I have had, I think, um, and actually I've had, it's been recommended to me from some other community attorneys that, that are currently allowing, and currently are accepting applications, or were accepting applications and have issued licenses, is to actually have an, uh, an independent panel do the evaluations and point assessment, take, taking it completely out of the council's hands, not that you guys aren't capable, but it, it certainly, uh, would, will take some of the pressure off you, because if you haven't already been, you're going to be getting inundated with, uh, requests and proposals and uh, offers of assistance and, and everything else, so by, by removing that from, from your plate, I mean, your, your responsibility will be to, um, either approve or not approve an ordinance, and then once it's, once it's approved, then the body or the entities that are tasked with, uh, doing, carrying out that ordinance, that'll be their responsibility to ensure that, uh, that it's done appropriately, fairly, and transparently.
Yeah, that was the observation when we were collecting data, so they did have an independent body that, you know, approved applications, reject applications, you know, did the scoring. I don't think any council, um, from any of the cities we looked at had anything to do with that, so you're right, an independent body should be set up, and it should be able to, uh, conduct any scoring or, or any rejections.
Yeah, like you said, I, I definitely want, um, definitely want council's input on the criteria- Yeah, like you said, I definitely want, definitely want council's input on the criteria and, and the, and the types of, again, the types of businesses that they want to see in their community. That, that's gonna be the role, the primary role of the council in this process. So, yeah, thoughts, feedback, keep it, keep it coming in because it's all getting shared and incorporated. And hopefully, like you said, we'll have a, a more concrete working draft here as we get, you know, further along in this process, so.
We want the feedback.
Yeah, that was, that's what I was gonna say. Can we set a deadline for the feedback? Because I know we were, we've been talking, you know, months ago about keeping this as a, you know, briskly moving process, and it seems like we've kind of stalled on the feedback here. I mean, could we do like a deadline of the end of this week for feedback or something like this so that you guys can move on and begin the next phase?
Yeah, I think, again, we'll give you a little break for the holidays, but, you know, if you could get it to me by the end of the first week, January, that way we'll have enough time to incorporate that before we present it to planning commission for their input. And like I, and I, I, I don't remember if I said this at the last council meeting or if I said it at the last planning commission meeting. But there's a lot of overlap right now between the two ordinances because Jill worked on the zoning and I worked on the general ordinance. So we are gonna be merging some of the stuff, site requirements, et cetera, from mine into hers and vice versa. So that it's, it's not quite so redundant. So, so, yeah, that, that's where, that's kind of what we're working on right now, is cleaning that up.
Okay.
What was the date that you'd like to have it by? Did you say first week in January?
Yeah, let me look at calendar real quick.
First Friday is January first, or the second Friday is.
Yeah, if you could, yeah, if you could have it to me by that eight, by the end of that first full week, the eighth, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And again, it, I'm not opposed to, you know, if you have an idea or some things that you can send it in, just piecemeal, send me an email that says, hey, I thought about this. And like I said, that'll all be included in our, in our discussions.
I'll send out a reminder to the DDA and planning commission to, to make sure that they give their feedback.
Okay, thank you. The infrastructure, infrastructure committee update, capital improvements, just to give you an idea, again, it's six thirty seven.
Yep, I can do this and I hope, I can hopefully do this in five to ten minutes tops, but. So the, the formal recommendation is, is being entered in today and will be up for acceptance and approval. Ideally, if, if council does agree to approving it, then the first formal step would take place on January fourth, when we would issue the, the notice to, a notice of intent, which basically indicates that council is informing, formally informing the citizens that we are planning on issuing a bond, and then they would have a forty-five day right of referendum. And so we want to, I mean, again, if this is something that we all agree to, we want this to go in parallel with the other bond that we're getting for, for roads and because there is a forty-five day right of referendum, working backwards, we would need to, need to get this going, you know, by our January, January fourth meeting. I do want to quickly walk through a couple of things that have changed. Obviously, we went through this in detail at the last meeting. But as we, Cheryl and myself and Scott have gotten into the weeds a little bit more, trying to refine some estimates and so forth, we, we have come across a few changes. And on page two of the document, I don't know what page it is in the packet, but page two of the document, just with respect to lead, one of the things we talked about last time was having to identify the materials and dig down five feet in front of everybody's house to look at the, the actual pipe at the stop box. We did raise the estimate there from six hundred and fifty dollars to seven hundred, actually, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per, per dig essentially, because we wanted to make sure, or we know that we're gonna be breaking up some sidewalks in order to be able to do this and we have to repair it. So we upped the estimate there, and that added another sixty thousand dollars and brought this particular project up to one point one six million. And then also, the other thing that we did is, is Scott indicated that he had given us an estimate that was a little bit low for the abatement. In those instances where we do have to abate, we were about a thousand dollars low on our estimates, so we raised that estimate. And we ended up allotting about a half a million dollars for abatements. Now hopefully, we won't have to use that. It's a big unknown. We don't think we have a lot of lead in the city or galvanized, but again, we're not gonna know until we, we do the, the actual evaluations. With respect to water loss on the next page, page three, a few things here, as you guys have probably seen, and we need to encourage. We did launch the, the home resident investigation process, or whatever you want to call it, where they'll help us, residents can help us by identifying, going through a process to identify the materials in their meter. We've been advertising that and we'll continue to advertise that because we are required to identify not only at the stop box in the front of the house, but also in the home. The second thing, you know, we talked about was doing a pilot study to, just to help us feel a little bit more comfortable. Although from everyone we've talked to in the industry, it does look like it's the water meters as to why we have the forty percent losses. Seems like it's a pretty standard problem as the, as the meters age. So we talked about doing a three thousand dollar project where we would replace ten meters in the city and then have those meters, send those meters out for testing. We've changed our approach on that because we did find out that we could actually have the meters tested in home. So what we'll need to do is get ten volunteers that'll allow a tester to come into the home. And that, that was only a hundred and twenty, roughly about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per meter. So it drops the cost of that project down from about three thousand to about thirteen hundred. And also, it really didn't make sense to replace these people's meters with meters that we have in stock when we're gonna have to turn around and replace them again with whatever meters we end up finally, whatever particular meter we, we end up doing the citywide replacement with. And then the other change here is the estimate, we did get a formal estimate for replacing all the meters in the city. And it was a little higher than what we had originally budgeted for. So you can see in, in the document, it's up here at eight hundred and sixty thousand to replace all the meters. Now, we do think we'll be able to bring that down and talking with, with the vendor and, and some things we talked about at our, our, our last infrastructure meeting. We do think we'll be able to take advantage of some discounts and hopefully we'll be able to get that down a little bit lower than what, what we show here. Sanitary sewer, retention tank, water system, nothing's changed there. Fire hydrants, the number of hydrants that I had quoted earlier was low. I was given the wrong number. We actually have two hundred and forty-three fire hydrants. And the only change that we've made here is, in the initial document, when we talked last time, we were talking about doing twenty hydrants a year for the next six years. Because this would be under, that, that was when Scott and I were talking, Cheryl and I were talking about doing this from the general fund over a separate program. But when we bring it under the capital improvement bond, we have three years to do the work, and so we had to double that. So we would be doing forty hydrants a year for three years. Same thing with the gate valves on the next page. We were talking about doing twenty-seven a year for six years, so we had to change that to fifty-four each year for the next three years. Okay? So those are the changes. Let me, before I talk about the financing, because I think that's probably the part that everybody's most interested in. Any questions on the actual, you know, all the detail that was in the document and what I just went over? Suzie, you're talking, but you're on mute.
Just talking to myself, sorry.
Just the fire hydrant part of that.
Oh, boy. That's exactly where I was gonna go. You go, man. Yeah.
So the fire hydrant part, because I, I seem to recall a couple of years back that those, some fire hydrants were replaced, and I don't know what that program was. It was before I was actually on council. And I, I don't know if it was a Southfield-driven project, or it was a combination of Lathrop and Southfield. Maybe you can shed some light on that.
We, we did, we did do some fire, I don't know the specifics of it. I just know that we did do some fire hydrant replacements a while ago. So, you know, we have two hundred and forty-three, I think the number is two hundred and forty-three fire hydrants. But we're only, we're only gonna be replacing or refurbishing, what did I say, a hundred, a hundred and twenty of them. So, so some of them are new, don't need to be refurbished or newer. But most of the, the fire hydrants are, a large percentage of them were put in, in, before nineteen thirty. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's overdue. Hopefully, if we do, you know, with all, all the stuff we're, we're talking about doing, especially the, the fire hydrants, you know, hopefully our, our fire rating will improve, which will help us on insurance, both from the city perspective as well as homeowners. So there, there could be some savings there too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else before I hit the, the financials? Okay, so if you turn to the page that's got the spreadsheet, it's page nine in the document. Real quickly, just, just as, as a reminder, and up at the top, I, I show our assets and, you know, we've got three point eight million dollars in the water fund. Currently, we're, we're proposing using half of that. So we've got about one point eight eight million would, would be an asset for this, this program. The one thing that's changed somewhat dramatically from our, our last discussion is we had the wrong number up here that didn't account where you see the thirteen point eight million cubic feet expected to be sold. We had twenty-five point four million there because it didn't incorporate the, the forty percent water loss that, that we're expecting again next year. And so what that does is the dollars raised through the capital component actually dropped from about two hundred and eight thousand to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So last time we talked, that number was two hundred and eight thousand. It's dropped down a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I just wanted to point that out because I'll come back to that in, in a minute. In terms of the estimated project costs, again, we had, we went from one point one million to one point one six million here for lead testing. The water, the water meters went up, I think about a couple hundred thousand. And then down at the bottom of that table, of that portion right there, the lead abatement, ditching, sidewalking and other that went up to a million dollars to accommodate the increased costs that we talked about with respect to lead, lead material identification as well as abatement. So when all is said and done, after we take the, the six point nine million total project costs, add in a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of bond financing and subtract out the one point one eight million that we have in the bank, so to speak, we need about five point one million dollars, which you can see there in, in the chart. And to pay off a, a bond of five point one eight million dollars, what we need is, is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars per year. And we have, this is where the number above that I talked about comes into place. We have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand that we're, we're expecting to get in each year. So that leaves us with a shortfall of about two hundred and nine thousand dollars. And so to, to recoup that money, going down a little bit lower, to recoup the, the two hundred and nine thousand, we were talking about doing that via the water rate, increasing the capital component of the water rate. And what that would come out to be right now here, as you see, is about nine point eight eight dollars, or nine dollars and eighty cents a, a month. Now, the one thing I want to talk about a little bit here in detail is the nine dollar and eighty-one cent per month increase. Now, you need to keep in mind that that's the theoretical maximum. There are a lot of variables that we can't essentially estimate, and, and I'll talk about that in a second. But that's the theoretical maximum. We don't expect that, that residents will ever hit that nine point eight eight one, or nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And, and that's for a variety of reasons. So first thing, first reason, there's, there's seven or eight reasons. Let me just go through them real quickly so you get an understanding of why, why it's kind of a variable rate. And again, nine point eight is the highest that, and, and we'll never see that. So, but we wanted, and I shouldn't let me step back, we wanted to give you a number, a, a monthly dollar amount. And, and so the only number that we were able to give is, is the theoretical maximum. But again, the reasons why it will be lower, first off, you know, one of the big things that we'll be doing as part of this project is replacing the water meters. And as the water meters are replaced, the capital revenue goes up. So if we can get the water loss down to twenty percent, hopefully lower, but our engineer says, you know, we should probably expect around twenty percent, given the age of our system. But if we can get it to twenty percent, that number drops immediately from nine dollars and eighty cents to seven dollars and eighty cents. And that's gonna happen in the first three years of, of this project. Every year, we're gonna be replacing probably about oh, six, seven hundred meters or so, so probably about six hundred meters. And so that's, that's gonna gradually go up, which is gonna bring that nine dollars and eighty-one cents down. So again, it would drop to seven dollars and eighty-two cents once all the meters are, are, are replaced, but it would have an immediate effect. The other reason is we're not pulling all the funds at once. So we're not pulling five point eight mil, five point one million dollars all at once. So it's not, this nine dollars and eighty-one cents assumes that we're pulling five point one million dollars from day one. And we're gonna do multiple issuances. So it's gonna start out being much less than that. And as it does go up, as we do subsequent issuances, it's still gonna be depressed though because of the, because of the replacement of the water meters. So again, it, it won't, it won't rise to, to the level that we're showing on the sheet here. Another big reason as well is, is the capital improvement bond includes upfront money for sidewalk repairs as well as ditch, the, the, I should, the sidewalk program and the ditch program. That money is gonna be reimbursed to the city from the residents. And so as we get that money each year from, from the residents through the special assessment, that money can then be put directly towards the, our, our annual payment for the, the capital bond, which is gonna reduce the amount of money that we need to, to raise through, through the, the capital component of the water rate. We're also expecting, or applying for grants. We're hoping to get some grants. Any grant that we get reduces the amount of money that we need, which in turn reduces the amount of money we need to pay back. And then, yeah, some of these projects will end up costing a little, hopefully less than what we have here. So for example, we talked about the water meters being eight hundred and sixty thousand. We think we can bring that down by eighty or ninety thousand dollars. So again, that has a depressive effect on the amount that we need to, that we need to raise to pay, in order to be able to pay back. And then the other issue as well is that we have one point eight million dollars in the water fund that we're using. If we use that right off the bat in year one, again, that means we're gonna need to take a much lower amount in year one, which means, again, a, a lower payback. And so all of these, all these, these things that I've talked about are all, all variable. But the, but the nice thing is, as you guys all know, we recalculate the, the water rate every year. So as these variables are ebbing and flowing, no, no pun intended, you know, it, that'll wash out in, in, in the water rates. The water rate will change every year. But, you know, we're anticipating that it's probably gonna hover somewhere more in the, the five to seven, five dollar to seven, five dollar to eight dollar range per month. So we're, we're looking less than a hundred dollars per, per year, per, per resident for about six point nine, almost seven million dollars worth of, worth of work, you know, on, on our infrastructure. So that's pretty much what I had. I'm sure there's questions, so I'll, I'll stop talking because I know we're, we're, we're short on time.
Are you taking into account the real water losses that you guys are gonna encounter, not just on the meter side? Because as we repair those, that, that estimate that you gave is gonna drop substantially, not just by the twenty percent. I think it's gonna be below the twenty percent. Have you taken that into account?
Well, no, what we, what we estimated was going from forty, when, when I said dropping from nine dollars and eighty-one cents to seven dollars and eighty-two cents, that's assuming we get to, we get to twenty percent. So we took a conservative approach. I'm hoping we'll get lower than that.
Right.
And if we do get lower than that, then it's gonna drop even more below seven dollars and eighty cents. It might drop to six dollars or six fifty. So, so again, we, we wanted to be able to, to, to give you a, a number so you had a sense of what this was gonna cost. And so what we did is the only number we could really, because all of these things are variable, we're not gonna know until we get into the, 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 we're not gonna know the magnitude of some of these things until we get into the project itself. And so we wanted to give a, a, a number so that you could at least get a sense of, of where it is. So we gave you the theoretical maximum that residents would, would need to be hit with. And again, it'll vary from year to year, and it should be, it should be significantly lower than that. Or it will be lower than that, I should say.
Right. Any negotiating on the new fire hydrants you guys are targeting?
Well, we'll be negotiating, you know, all of this will be competitive bid. You know, we're gonna do what we can to, you know, get the, the prices, prices down in all of these projects. Because, and I mean, it, it, we're, once the bond is approved, you know, all of our, our bidding process goes to, you know, the standard process that we've always used in the past. And RFP will go out for most of these things. Sunday, we'll be doing some of them. He's given us a very good price on some of the stuff. But, you know, RFPs will go out, it will be competitively bid. You know, where, where, where appropriate and, you know.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
Um, because we've run out of time, we're just gonna skip down if there's any public comments real quick before we have to flip over to the actual council meeting. Is there any public comments? Cheryl, do you see anyone that is, their hand raised or anything?
I don't see one who's raised their hands to ask to participate in public comment. You. I don't see one who's raised their hands to ask to participate in public comment, you did have the one. Person at Salem.
And then Joe Robinson also has.
Yeah, I should mention too, the the committee members are, some of the committee members are on, I'm sorry, neglected to say that, some of them on, so if you want to ask questions of of them as well, they are. They are here, or at least Joe and Mike, I think are here. Joe's raising her hand.
Yeah, just to piggyback off. What was explained, we were trying to provide the worst case scenario, so. At worst case, nine dollars and eighty-one cents is what. Is to be expected as an increase on a monthly basis for the residents versus. Giving a a a lower dollar amount and then having to come back and adjust, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
I really appreciate the way you guys broke down the price, the cost though to the residents, it just does, it sounds more palatable. And so I I appreciate that.
Yeah, and a large, a large part of, I said this last time too, a large part of this is 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 possible because of the way that the city is is kind of. You know, banked some of this money and planned planned for the future, so, you know, we've got one point eight million dollars that really helps us to defray. You know, what we have to hit with the the residents within the future, so, you know, that really helps.
Thank you, guys, Ed Salem also has a question. You're still on mute.
I saw, I saw him pop up for a second.
He's trying to talk?
I can hear you. Hello? Mr. Salem?
Oh, Sam? Is Sam?
Pardon me? Okay, Cheryl, you can put him back on mute. Or Kel, sorry, Kel, I didn't see you just pop up. Is there anyone else that has public comments? Okay, so it looks like for the the actual city council meeting, we will be talking about the. I guess we only have the appointments to discuss, so the discussion will be during our council meeting, I guess. So if you have any questions, hold on to them and that, wait a minute, we got one more person here raising their hand, Scott R.
Well, if that's me, I don't think I raised my hand.
Scott Wrangler.
Yeah.
Oh, it looks like it's a phone number, three one three five.
No, that's not me.
Oh, it's popping up weird for me, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm not sure who is at the one, geez, it keeps moving for me, I can't even. One, one, three, one, three, five? If Kel, do you can unmute them?
He's off mute.
I can't, um, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear you?
Okay. You can.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Hi, hi, Mary Garrett and the members of council, a quick question for you guys. I'm a property owner in Lathrop Village, I own the the lot on Southfield. Just, I think it's just south of the DXL over there. I'm not sure if you 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 know the lot that I'm talking about.
Yeah, we do.
So, in regards to the the cannabis issue, I I received a few phone calls regarding that property. And I was wondering if you, the the city would allow. Multiple applicants to apply for that property rather than just allowing one person apply.
So we have not gotten to the point of even approving a cannabis cannabis industry coming to Lathrop Village and then. And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, when it comes to private property, whoever wants to buy the property, that's not something that the city would be. Involved in, it would just be for the licenser if cannabis is approved.
If is approved, right.
Yeah, I think it, and right now, the way the ordinance is drafted, again, it's not, it's not finalized yet, but. Right now, there, one of the the requirements would be that they would either have to show proof of ownership of the property. Or a lease agreement with the property, so unless it was a situation where. Multiple entities had lease options or some something on the property. I I don't see how you could have multiple applicants for the same parcel of property.
I see, okay, so I I think you just answered my question, thank you, thank you so much.
What's your name again?
I'm Ali Darwich of J R Y Properties. J R Properties.
You said Ali, what's your last name?
Ali Darwich, D A R W I C H.
Okay, thanks, that's for the clerk, by the way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't see any more hands up, so what I want to do is go ahead and adjourn the study session and we can read adjourn. For the, we're doing the council meeting first, not the closed session, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a different link, yes? Okay, well then, I will close out the study session, see you all in a minute.